Meeting is now called to order. City of Lawrence Common Council Committee of the Whole. Today is Wednesday, July 20, 2022, and it's now 5:32 PM. On the agenda tonight, we have proposal number 17, 2022, amending Title I, Article II, Chapter II, Section 4 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lawrence, redistricting, Common Council District. Boundaries pursuant to Indiana Code 36-4-6-3. So that is the only order of business on the agenda this evening. We do have a quorum. So I am going to open it up. First of all, if you could please come forward, sir, state your name and your address for the record.
My name is William Growth. I live at 8026 Dean Road, Indianapolis, Washington Township.
Thank you, sir. So if you can give us an overview of what's being proposed in terms of redistricting for the City of Lawrence.
I don't know who he...
We hired him.
He's the B-Link contract was with Bill Growth.
Okay. Just think for clarification.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's been a while. It's been a minute.
Yes, I was engaged to work with the city on the new redistricting. I appreciate that privilege very much. Thank you. Do you need me to review?
I would give some... Yeah, I would give... You could give a high level of your experience, and then if you could go into, you know, sort of an overview, that would be great.
I've been involved in... Well, first of all, I'm a practicing lawyer. I have been for 46 and a half years. I've been involved in a number of political redistrictings over the last 30 or so years, including working with the Marion County City County Council in 1990. 2010, I was involved in litigation involving that map that went all the way to the State Supreme Court. I've drawn several plans for various township boards here in Marion County, mostly north of... Mostly Lawrence, Washington, Pike. I think I did one for Warren. I've done one for Wayne. So... And I've done those over the last two redistricting cycles. So I have a fairly well-rounded background in redistricting law. As the council... As Chavez said, this particular redistricting is governed by a particular state statute that applies only to second-class cities, which is 36-4-6-3. And I'll just go over quickly the essential requirements or conditions that must be met. First of all, the districts must all be contiguous, meaning they have to be touching. They have to be reasonably compact, not perfectly compact, because probably no such thing unless we're dealing with squares and circles. They are to respect precinct boundaries. And I don't know if... I assume most everyone here knows that the precinct boundaries have changed since the last redistricting cycle. Mayor's office controls those district lines. So we have different configured precincts here in Lawrence Township as we do throughout Marion County. And then, and this is always the challenge, the districts have to contain as nearly as possible equal population. And the problem is sometimes that requirement is in a bit of tension with the requirement that districts be... Respect precinct boundaries, because we only have so many precinct boundaries. We have a very limited number of kind of building blocks, if you will. And for example, I'll just tell you that my first go-through on this, I ended up... The population numbers were not to my liking. They were... They exceeded... The deviation exceeded 10%, and we couldn't really have that under federal law and federal case law. So I had to go back to the drawing board, and we ended up having to split one precinct, and that was only done to get our population deviation below that 10%. I think we ended up at 8%. So when I approached this task, first of all, I had one advantage. I didn't know any of the district councillors, so I wasn't going to be in a position to play favorites. I didn't look at the racial or political data going into the process. The one thing that I tried to do right off the bat was to try to avoid haring incumbents, okay? Try to preserve as much of the existing districts as I could, not put two incumbents in a contest against each other. And I was able to achieve that. And I think you'll see, or if you compare this map with the old map, it's not wildly different. It pretty much maintains most of the core of the pre-existing districts as best I could. I mean, I understand that some of you probably would like to have had all of your old district and nobody new, but it proved impossible, because we had to deal with new precincts, and we had to deal with new population numbers as a result of the most recent federal census. So that's how I went about the task. It is challenging because of the relatively few number of precincts, but I think we came up with the best possible map that was reasonably doable under the circumstances. So I don't know if I have anything further to cover, but I'm happy to take questions if the chair...
Yeah. So I want to open it up to the councillors to ask Mr. Growth any questions that you have.
Mr. Growth, just to start out, could you point out the PC district that you felt you... Or that had to be divided, or where that might be on the map?
The precinct that we ended up dividing is, I think it's 50?
Yeah, that sounds right. Let me look at it.
Lawrence 50. And we basically divided it in half, because we had one district that was too high, one district... The next district over was too low, population-wise. By doing that, we achieved pretty, you know, the best possible population equality, I think we could. And I really didn't want to do that, but it's less of a problem now than it used to be, because we have voting centers and our voting isn't precinct-based. I mean, that used to be really difficult if you had precinct-based voting, and then you had two different council districts in the same precinct. That really caused headaches for election administrators. But we tried to avoid it, but I think just having to split one precinct out of, what is it, 35, is not bad.
What's the 50 mean?
It's a precinct number. So it's basically the area... One district, I took the area east of Sunnyside Road and north of Pendleton Pike.
Okay.
And District Four took the part of 50 south of Pendleton Pike, if that makes sense to you. So basically, 50 would overlay at the Pike, if that makes sense.
So Pendleton Pike is a natural barrier...
Exactly.
For that division. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair... Oh, I'm sorry.
So Counselor Chevlot first, then Counselor Smoroff.
So I'm just looking at this map, and I kind of did some figures of previous maps to this map. And I was looking at the population count, which is what I think you mentioned. District One had a population decrease of 4.7%. District Two, 3% increase. District Four, all the building at Winding Ridge, 4%. So I was just looking at the raw numbers of total voters. And so District Five, which I represent, used to have about 8,400 voters. It looks like 300 of those-plus voters removed from District Five over to District Six. So District Five now has, under this current proposed, 8,192 constituents. District Six went up to 8,400. But the growth of the city, the population increase was the most, was in what we would know is District Three, which is Fort Ben. So 10 years ago, we didn't have any of these apartments. We didn't have David Weekly Homes in District Four. Tons of new building off of 56th Street, which is Winding Ridge, all the way out to Carroll. So can you kind of walk me through why those districts weren't as in parity as others? So yeah, I'll just kind of leave it at that.
And I think if you could start, you know, with that conversation with where the population growth was in comparison to what the legal standard is in terms of the deviation. And then I think it's also... It's hard for us as the elected officials not to talk about voters, but redistricting isn't about voters. It's about population growth. But it's hard for us not to think about it from that lens. So if you could start there, where was the population growth? And to Counselor Chevlot's point, if the growth is in three or four, then explain some of the other movement.
Well, you folks would be more familiar with where your population growth than I. I don't live in Lawrence Township. I don't live in the city. I didn't look at the old map and compare it with the new map.
And the reason you didn't, Bill...
Starting with basically a blank slate.
Because the legal standard is not how much the population grew between censuses in that 10 years. The 10% deviation that Bill is talking about is between, based on current population from the 2022... Or 2020 census, is there more than a 10% deviation between the populations of the six districts?
As they exist.
As they exist in 2020. It is not legally relevant. I understand it's relevant, maybe relevant to you as council members, so I don't want to say... I'm not criticizing the question. I just want to make sure you all understand, the reason Bill did not look at the 2010 census is that is not the standard by which we will be legally judged. And then I'll stop talking and let Bill jump in.
My guess is that the 2010 census, if we hadn't made these changes, would be out of compliance with the population...
Right.
Equal population requirements of the federal constitution, would be subject to...
Right.
Vulnerable to a federal lawsuit.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I wish I could be more helpful to you, but I can assure you that I approached this task in a totally objective way, and to try to use my knowledge of the law and numbers that I had to work with and the building blocks that I had to work with to come up with this fair plan as I could. And of course, fair is in the eye of the beholder. I understand that. I shouldn't use that word. I should say, I tried to come up with a plan, had made as little... As few changes as possible to the existing districts, and came and was in compliance with federal and state law requirements.
Yeah. I mean, my math shows five of the six districts are about 8,000, and the fourth one is 7,800. I mean, it's not a huge deviation, and it can't be by law. They're pretty close, not perfect, but close.
What do you mean by that? Wait, you're talking like 8,000 people?
8,000 people, according to the 2010 census. So your goal would be that you have six districts with exactly 8,000 people in it.
So District One, for example, now has 7,840 as the population count. District Four is 8,400, so over 10... Almost over 10% difference.
No, that's not how the 10% is calculated. Bill wants to talk about that.
Now, the way you... If I could, the way you calculate the deviation is you take the total population of the city, divide that by six, and it gives you the ideal population for each district, which is 82-32. And then you measure the spread between that and the lowest populated district and the highest.
Right.
And that came to 8%. And keep in mind, too, that this is total population, not voting age population.
Voters, yeah.
So if you've got some portions of the city, for example, that have a lot of young families who have moved in, it's going to increase the total population, but the voting population is going to be much lower.
Very much so.
Counselor Smoroff.
I have a question regarding new developments that are currently under development or platted or approved. Was that considered at all? Because I know in the areas of which I represent, there is a lot of construction and plat approvals and BZA approvals for major developments, housing developments.
No, that wasn't taken into account and couldn't legally be taken into account, because we are obligated to use the population numbers reflected by the 2022 census.
It's a snapshot in time. 2020 census, it's a snapshot in time. It can't be...
2020 census, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did the exact same thing. And it can't be changed, and these are not rules that we set or the state sets. These are United States Supreme Court ruled, down to the level of how you calculate the 10% from the midpoint, rather than between the highest and the lowest.
Yeah.
That's the level of detail they went into to tell us how we have to do this. And we cannot do it again until 2032.
So can I...
Go ahead. Counselor Giles.
When you put the plan together, and this is the proposed plan, is there another one?
No. I mean, could I create other ones by spending many, many more hours and tweaking the neck out of this one? I suppose I could, but I kind of... It's a process, and this process led me to this plan. This wasn't the first plan by any means, but it's the one I ended up with by, you know, having to try to bring the entire plan into compliance with the various requirements.
I understand that. I just... I guess I'm not even criticizing the plan at all. I'm just asking is, as we get back to evaluate, right? This is... I'm not... I don't have anything to evaluate. I got one plan. I'm just asking... Otherwise, I don't have any reason why to not just vote tonight if this is it. This is it. So I'm asking like, you know, is there a plan that says, oh, well, you know, you're still keeping the numbers the same, right? I'm figuring our city's got 48,000 people in it. You got six districts, you got 8,000 people, right? A little more than four. But I didn't know if there was any... I just know if there was anything to evaluate.
I was... I understood my instructions as being to come up with a recommended plan, and that's what I did.
I'd say, so this is the first time I've ever been through this, right? So you have the 40 years' experience. I don't. I'm just asking, when you create a plan, it's typical... I guess you're teaching me that it's typical in this process to come with one plan. We're typically used to evaluating something and trying to choose what we figure is best. In this situation, it sounds like the rules are so tight that either you only come up with one plan if you follow the rules. If you don't follow... If you don't follow the rules, then that's how you do it.
I don't know if I would go that far, Tyrell, and I...
Then why don't I have two plans, then?
Well, why don't you have two possible options for sewer raids? I mean, you could.
He could if I said no, and he could go back and go...
You could. Do we... Is it... Well, I'll tell you a couple things, so you know the full background. One is, in Lawrence, as we see many times, we're a bit hamstrung by what the City of Indianapolis does. We have to wait for them to do their thing, because as you guys well know, the voting in our county is centralized in Indianapolis. And, you know, even to split up one precinct, Bill had to run traps with the Marion County Clerk to make that happen. So could we have split other precincts and come up with a different plan? That was legal? Yes. But every time you split a precinct, you can create other problems with centralized voting in Indianapolis. The last thing is, we are on a timetable statutorily. I'm a bit concerned, and I did advise Lisa in all transparency, that one plan was better because we got to get this done, and we started late than most other cities, who only put forth also one plan. Indianapolis had one plan. Most of the other cities we work with had one plan, because Bose does this, too, in other places. So I'm a little worried that if we, A, ask Bill to redo this, his ability to come up with something that is as good as this, I don't know. I'm confident, I can't control us getting sued. You know, you can get sued any day for any reason. I'm pretty confident this is completely legally compliant, and is something that we can defend, what we did. Whether another plan would be as good as that, I doubt. I don't know. He worked really hard, and we got to pay him more to do more work. And if you want to do that, I mean, it's up to the council.
You guys went further than I was saying. I just was saying, do I have, you know, do I have two sheets of paper to read? I just, you know... So with that, because I heard we weren't voting on anything tonight, but...
Well, and part of that is trying to get as much, in the time we have left, as much public input. And I don't know that there's a member of the public here tonight, but...
I mean, we have until November to vote on this.
Correct.
Yeah, so we've got a few months.
And so I would... I always, you know, encourage as much public input. I would not pass it tonight. That would not be my advice.
Because we need to allow for public input.
Because people have not...
President Chavez said, when this was first introduced, that part of this would be to go out into the districts perhaps, or hold a public meeting where all the districts come. That's just part of the process. Any... It's not a waste of time, though. I'm just...
Well, but you got to let the voters. You got to let the voters.
If I'm a voter, and I don't like it, what is my remedy?
Well, you...
If I'm a group of voters, let's say the whole Brookhaven neighborhood, your whole neighborhood association, let's say a group of 5,000 voters don't like it, what is the remedy?
You lobby your council representative to go back...
That's why I asked, is there opportunity for another plan? Is there space? So that's all I'm asking.
Could we ask for another plan and invest more money and pay more money if that's what we... Because that would require us to vote and get a majority vote to pay Mr. Growth more money, another contract? We could do that. So the answer to your question is, yes, we could do that. I think that this process is one that I want to make sure that there's transparency and there's public input, as there was in all of the other cities around us, to include Indianapolis, who went through this effort. Because I think that if it did come to a point, heaven forbid, that we were sued, we want to be able to show that we allowed for public input into this process. So we're going to go through that, because I think that's the right thing to do. And I think also, Counselor Giles, if you could refrain from commenting, I want to give the councillors opportunity to make sure they're clear, and if they have any questions, they're going to get questioned by their constituents possibly as well. So are there any other councillors? Counselor Whitfield, you're on video. Did you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair, at this time, no. Thank you for asking.
You're welcome.
Madam President, I do have a question. When you talk about gaining the public...
Madam Chair.
Oh, hold one moment, Counselor Wells. I'm going to let Counselor Russell have the floor, and then you will follow Counselor Russell.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
When we talk about, when we go out into the districts and talk to them, could we also, I mean, the best way to say it is, could we also include, like, maybe like, and educate them as, like, an education process as to what this is? Because honestly, going out there sometimes, some people don't even know what district they're in. Do you know what I mean? So like, why this is important, so maybe kind of like a why, what, who, what women, why with this, just because they can understand the importance of it. I mean, if we already have that, that's great, but I... In the years I've lived here...
I think we can get you... I think we can get you.
Yeah. I mean, well, these...
Just for you to get.
The reason I had to, and I'm happy to make more if y'all want more than two, was so that you could take them...
Okay.
To show them to people. I do want to advise, because it's a pending proposal from the council, you know, unless we publicly noticed a meeting, we couldn't have five of you or more at the same place doing a public presentation on this. I think it's absolutely a good idea if you want to do it either on your own or in small groups. Cool. But just be aware of that, because I don't want you accused of considering something, you know, with a quorum without proper public notice.
Okay. Thank you. Good question, Counselor Russell. Counselor Wells, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry I'm not in attendance. I contracted COVID about a week and a half ago, and I didn't want to take a risk on giving it to anybody.
Thank you.
But it... And I'm having a real difficult time hearing some of the other councillors that are in attendance. But so forgive me if I'm repetitive of saying or asking something that's already been covered. But first off, I want to say is, as you all know, I won my sister's council seat of District Two, which she had for 12 years, and I've had now for right about six. I don't remember these boundaries ever changing during her tenure or mine.
They did.
So I'm just... You know, I guess it just puzzles me as to why, you know, there's such a dramatic change now where there hasn't been in the last 18 years. The other point that I'd like to make, and I think maybe it's already been made, but I know when this was first discussed, and I can't remember how far back it's been, but I believe it was like maybe the first year that it was brought to our attention, that we were told that we were going to have plenty of input on this. Well, I haven't been asked anything from anybody about any of this and not made aware of it until I emailed that map, which, by the way, I can't read. Now, I understand that if you keep zooming in on it, that you can eventually see boundaries, but I can't make head or tails of that map trying to look at it on, you know... I guess I should try to look at it on a computer screen. Maybe it would be a little more visible. But I've been told that I was going to get the maps from another source, but I have yet to got them yet. So I can't even talk intelligently about, or ask an intelligent question about, you know, the outcome of this. But I do know, and Counselor Smoroff, she brought this up, but I know that Quorons is putting in a whole new mobile home park there at 52nd Minhofer, which I guess would have been in my district, but now no longer is, because my understanding is, I have... I don't have any or many of the mobile home parks like I used to have. So... But the gentleman just said that, you know, this is pretty much the way it is. And but I'll just go on record for saying that I'm entirely disappointed, because I don't think we've had any of the input that we were promised.
Okay. So let me just clear this up. We, the council, hired Mr. Growth to do this work and to bring forth one recommendation for redistricting. He has been working on that process for the last few months. This is his first time coming forward and presenting his recommendation. We have until November, so tonight is our first of many discussions regarding the redistricting, okay? We're not going to vote on this tonight. We're not going to vote on this this month. We're not going to vote on it next month. So rest assured that you will have many opportunities to provide input. The other thing I want to keep us focused on is, you know, these... This process is one of those things where, you know, how we feel about it is not a consideration. We are mandated federally about how we do this process. So I want everyone to just stay focused on that, you know? I am going to open it up. I see Nick Roberts is out here, and he is a constituent, I think, that has some questions or may want to make comment. So I want to open that up, and then just rest assured that we will have more conversations.
Madam President, can I comment as to previous map changes? And I know that Counselor Chevlot knows this, because he was around, and Counselor Freeman may remember as well. Counselor Wells, the district map changed in 2012, the district based on the 2010 census. It changed in 2002, based on the 2000 census. I know those two, because I asked Kathy to pull them myself and read them myself. The law as it exists today has existed in some form since 1980, and as you probably know, censuses have been done for purposes of elections since the 18... Or 1700s, I think. 1790 was the first one, I think. So this happens every 10 years everywhere.
Well, I don't doubt... I'm not disputing that it happens. I guess the only thing that I disputed is the fact that...
Well, you said that the map didn't change. The map didn't change, sir. It changes every 10 years.
In District Two, that the boundaries changed significantly, if any, in the last 18 years.
They did change. I assure you, they did. Apologies, but you're incorrect. They did change. I assure you they did. Apologies, but you're incorrect.
Councilor Somoroff.
I'm sorry. These two questions may be dumb, and I apologize for that. But first one was, this will take effect when? At the next election, is that correct, in which the municipalities will?
It takes effect January 1, 2024.
2024, thank you.
So it's for elections-
2023.
In 2023. So basically, it takes effect for elected officials in office January 1, 2024, which means it's for the 2023 elections.
Okay, thank you. And then a follow-up about the question I asked earlier. Given that there's a lot of development, as Councilor Wells indicated, regarding that particular areas of approval of housing units and so forth, will that throw off the population totals for that district? How will that piece work?
It's a snapshot in time, Maria. So you are judged on what the census in Lawrence is when they took the census, and I think it was from March to June of 2020. Lawrence as it existed at that time, not what was, not what we knew what was coming down the Pike, not what was in the middle of being built, who, and not who didn't answer the census, because we know there were several that did not, particularly because of the COVID quarantine situation. It kind of is what it is in that census snapshot in time, and we do not look at it again until 2030.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. You mentioned, just coming at it from a new perspective, not new perspective, brand new to this, you mentioned something about precinct. You were talking about precincts, and like, that's with Indianapolis, correct? If I'm wrong? The Indianapolis, no.
Well, Indianapolis creates the precincts. So that's what the Indianapolis mayor does as the first step in Marion County, because he's the executive mayor of Marion County. And then the standard is, we, the legal standard is, we attempt to the best we can to keep those intact. And what Bill is saying, we did do that except for one, and where we did it in the one had the natural boundary of Pendleton Pike as the divider. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just so I can see it for like my own notes. Do we have, is that on the Indianapolis website, the list of the precincts, so I can kind of see that in comparison to this? Just-
I believe Indianapolis, Marion County, has their own GIS online, and you just have to click the right box to get the precinct map, and then blow it up to where you can just see Lawrence. And if you need help with that, I'm happy to try to help you.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what he was talking about. Just, I'm a visual learner, so.
Yeah, me too.
Any other councilors?
Thank you, sir. We might call you back up, but thank you for now.
Thanks, Bill.
So, Mr. Roberts, you have a few minutes to make public comment.
Okay, I will try to keep this concise.
And state your name first and last, and address for the record, please.
Yes, Nick Roberts. I live in Lawrence Township at 10326 Stingray Drive, but my dad lives in District Three, and Councilwoman Freeman, District Nine. Mom lives actually in Chevlot's district.
Does he live in Lawrence?
I live in Lawrence. Am I not allowed to speak if I don't live in the city?
You sure, you sure cannot.
Oh, really?
I'm sorry. But what we can do, we can talk to you offline and hear you out. But yeah, you have to, you have to live in the city of Lawrence. I have made exception in the past for business owners, those that own a business in our city who have a vested interest.
I was going to go over some of the population data that I was aware of, but that's okay. I can go over-
We can talk after, absolutely. Thank you.
And your parents are also quite welcome to come.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Any other constituents here to make public comment? Any other questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned.